How about we start the meeting at 7:38. A rise to the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Secretary, do you roll?
All right, roll call, DeLucky.
Here.
Slips.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Patterson, here.
Barely.
Yeah. It's Christmas fall.
Okay, so now, we do approval of agenda.
Is that the place, Dennis?
What's that?
This is what you're looking for?
Yeah, I have one somewhere.
The minutes or the agenda?
Both.
Do you have the agenda on the table? I don't have it. Did you go over this one?
No, I have two.
Okay.
Okay. So, hearing, are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I have none to offer. Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
No favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're moved. Okay, now we move on to our last meeting minutes of March 4th.
March 14th.
14th, yes. Thanks, Mike.
Motion to approve minutes of March 14th as presented.
Second?
Second.
No favor?
Aye.
Mike, you have to stay. Oh. Sorry.
Because I wasn't there.
Yeah.
That's a good reason.
Okay, so now we're moving on to the Orchard Trail Meadows project. Is that from Norm?
I think signing up the date, obviously the planner and the engineer had a chance to look at the plan that was given here today, I'm fed up just today, so I couldn't get in here any quick identification and I didn't get back to Friday night, couldn't pick it up till this morning, so I brought it in quick. But what we can do is kind of go over the comments. Did everybody get a copy of this letter?
Yes.
Should be in your packet.
No.
Today's packet, no.
Should go in your file.
Nope.
Well, that's a manual, that's...
No?
You can make a copy.
I didn't bring it, but I got an extra copy, I didn't bring it.
Okay, you guys get to share.
I can make the packet, tell him to keep it.
I've got one copy here, one more.
Is there, does, is there anyone who has it too?
I'll leave back in mine, because I'll make it over tonight.
Mike, you have one. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, anyway, I guess some weeks back, the report, everybody got the report, that was a few weeks ago. So this is basically comments on that report, okay? And of course, the plan, this plan, it has a little more engineering and stuff on it than that plan does, but, and it has comments on it as well, and we'll address those. Number one, we'll go and do the rural engineering, and instead of water main, bullet point number six, the length of the dead end of water main was raised as a concern. And anyway, Row suggests that we loop the water main, this is a suggestion now, then falls active, and a delivery lane to the east, in order to accomplish this request, we would need to install about 980 feet of water main. There might be a way to do a study of the proposed system and show that the water will not become stagnant once all the homes are having occupied. And so one of the things that I had the engineer do, and I see he made a mistake already, but to address the water main issue, the, on there, he made the capacity of water main.
Yeah, eight inch.
An average daily use, okay? Well, when I seen the average capacity of the water main, eight inch water main, I seen it was 9,880 gallons to hold, and I started thinking, the water main is only 948 feet long, so that means, and so if you took the math, that'd be 10 gallons of, over 10 gallons of water per running foot. Well, if you take an eight inch water main, only one foot high, I don't think it would hold 10 gallons of water, it wouldn't even hold five gallons of water. So I was somewhere along the line, he made a mistake, but I did go ahead and talk to my telephone, to my cellphone, and I've got the right answer, and it would be roughly 2,480 feet, or 80 gallons, so that's how many gallons it leaves in this pipe. If you use an average of 100 gallons per person per day, some of this probably is more, some a little bit less, but from what I understand, that's about what people use. If it was 31 units, that'd be 6,200 gallons a day. So basically, the water would be changed at least twice a day, so I don't think it had much of a stagnation problem. Because the cost of running that would be, actually, there's more pipe here, 946.
Forty-six.
Eighty feet, and the other thing compared to 946, so, and this around the regular water main, and it's over 40,000, and that's under ideal conditions, and then you'd have to go through the detention pond, and, I mean, it would be a nightmare. So basically, that would be something that wouldn't be, at least, wouldn't be economically feasible in the project, and it's not really necessary, so that would be one of the things. Because we would have, like I say, you'd have at least two changes of water a day, so the pipe wouldn't get stagnant. So again, if you're going to have, you know, something half full, less than half full, would be, we would change every day. Bullet point number two.
But couldn't you loop, without doing that, just loop the system? So, right here at Franklin?
Well, you got a 12 inch main, we could tap, I guess you tap back, you could tap back into the 12 inch main. I mean, I don't, that would have a good suggestion.
Your tap somewhere is into Franklin's main, correct?
Well, there's two mains there, isn't there? That says something about two mains, or, I don't know.
Yeah, I kinda, I saw something like that, too. Okay, so, we'll move on.
But anyway, that would be something.
I got the gist of it, yeah.
The next bullet point, the site plan, clearly, for first 24 foot wide roads, that's what we put in all our projects, and most are that way, because you don't park on the street in this type of a project. But the coal, your ordinance says 28 feet.
Yes, right, and that's what you said, but you said you're tearing this off of McVicker Meadows?
Yeah.
I happened to go there yesterday, so I thought I wanted to go there on Granny's Easter Sunday Day, when people would be most there, and see what the parking was like, and they actually do park on the street.
Well, if you read the things, they, they do park on the street, okay? But it's for loading and unloading, and people take, this, I did bring the condo docks and stuff like that, and you can, there's certain, that would be part of the condo docks, but you're right, they do park, they do park on the street.
I mean, it's only, I mean, you can't expect that Granny's gonna have the kids over for Easter dinner, or Christmas, or any other holiday, and they're all gonna park in the driveway.
No, they're all parked in the street, okay? They do that. You just can't park, just like even a town here, in the wintertime, you can't park in the street.
Well, you can't, you just can't overnight park it.
Overnight park, and it's about the same thing here.
Okay.
So if you have a big old party, there'll be parks all the way around the, wherever you can park, it works, so that, that would be...
We just need to kind of be clear when we say that there's no parking, but there is.
Well, there is parking.
Okay.
You know, I mean, there is parking.
And, and you're right, so a lot of this stuff is gonna have to be addressed in the condo dock.
In the condo docks, that, that type of thing, the overnight parking, almost the same type. In fact, I did bring a copy of the condo docks, that you would receive if you bought a unit over there, or any unit, it doesn't matter whether it's there, or here, or wherever it was. But I just want to show you, this, this, I just picked one up today. This, this is what you get.
Yeah.
About the size of your ordinance, the size of your ordinance. So things are pretty well regulated.
Right.
Okay? And that, honestly, one, the one that I made in that, or one over Bruce Meadows, we would have to tweak some, because it was individual wells in each one of those sites. But you, here, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to do it if you don't have the aquifer that, that did have. Okay, so, but the street's another one. The soil borings, we would put the roads in, we would do some tests, okay, as it stands, I think on the plan, it'll show three, just to see, but the roads will all be put into McComb County specs. The biggest reason that was a problem with phase three wasn't the base, it was the sub base of the, of the road itself, not the ground conditions. The sub base had, the sub base in that, on the road were, was garbage, symbols, all that. That's, of course, we have inspectors, I suppose we inspect that, but that's, you know, there, but anyway, the ground conditions probably are good, but we do three test holes, but they will be installed according to McComb County, and plus the fact the association has to maintain them. And if you've been over to the one in Bruce Meadows, those roads are about, what, 24 years old? And they're still, I mean, they're maintained, but the association has to maintain them. Okay, so that takes care of the engineer. That takes care of the engineering. The planner, I guess, in the ordinance, there's a preparation for a tree survey, obviously the trees, when you have that many houses in an area that big, and with roads and everything else, it won't be too many trees left standing.
Right.
But one of the things that, that we propose, anyway, would be at least a minimum of one tree per lot, and then when you get around, on some of those cul-de-sac things, you probably could put two, where there might be a side yard as well. Then there's landscaping, so the whole thing is landscapes, and that's not done by individuals. Individuals can add to the landscaping, but there's a minimum on landscaping, if you want over in Bruce Meadows, you'll see some people have a whole lot, some have a minimum. But there is basic landscaping, there's trees. Design.
So that'll show up in a different plan?
Pardon?
It'll show up in your landscaping plan, then?
There would be a landscaping plan, but that comes when I start bidding out for landscaping, you know, in other words, I get ahold of a landscaper and get based on certain things, and get, try and get some input, what might look the best.
Okay, that would be before the project would be approved.
That could be, that would come along, that would be something I would be doing while the, the engineering drawings have to be done, obviously, you know, the manhole sizes and sewer depths and stuff.
Landscape plan does.
Landscape plan is too.
But then, pardon?
Landscape plan is part of that, too.
And landscaping plans, well, that would, that would come from probably a landscape type, you know, some...
But that's part of the approval.
That'd be part of the approval, yeah. But I mean, that's what we did over there, and that's normally what was, so you get some trees, get put back in anyways, so. And there's no super good trees over there. There was one nice oak tree, that I'd like to save, that's about six inches diameter, but...
So we, we kind of do need to, I mean, it could be as simple as one of you guys and one of the planning commission members do a walkthrough and find out what's there?
Yeah, we can do that, in fact, we can do that anytime, but this won't be many trees. Most of those trees that are there, there's a, there's a half, most of them are under eight inches, I think your tree ordinance has something to say about eight inches.
Yeah, it does.
And I don't think there's too many trees, and ones that are bigger than eight inches are poppers, anyway.
And they don't apply?
They don't, so, I, that's not a, I don't think that's something that's going to be a big tag in there. Streets are cold street, or private streets. Then you talk about a stub, well, apparently, didn't look at the surrounding area, there'd be no place to stub anything, too.
No.
So that's how, design layout, blocks, layout, it's titled, oh, design three blocks, so, pedestrian access to the trail. I don't know, and obviously, there's not any room for that. Something like that could be built, done, through the park area, you know, where you first come in, and, and I don't know about, you know, back behind the water main, I mean, there could be something done there, but to do, put anything in the sub, there's no room for it.
That would be something, I think, that we should make sure that we address.
Well, yeah, that, that could be, once again, I'm not in a position to take a lot out to put a street, because the only people that want to use that thing, in theory, would be the people in this, in the area itself, okay? And basically, some of those back up to the trail, obviously, probably about a third of them or so, and then the ones that don't, I'm sure, there are gonna be cases where some kid wants to take his bicycle, he'll run between two units, I can imagine that. I mean, I don't think that's gonna be a big concern. But if you wanted something that would open up that whole end of town, then that would have to come.
I don't think that's what they're looking for in that.
Yeah, that would just be, in fact, now, that, that would be one of the things that would be a plus for mine, as far as sales of a unit, and something that we're not too concerned with. A street park, we already, we already addressed that. Well, one thing I knew probably wouldn't fly, but I thought I'd throw it in there, anyway, when we do those trees, sometimes when we do these projects, they, you plant the trees, you know, at the end of the project, and then the landscaping, all that, and then the people move in. A lot of times, people don't care, don't take care of the trees, and they die.
Right.
And although I will admit, there's only a couple of communities, one, I think, is Rochester Hills, I was thinking of a little pure, but I don't think it's a pure, but anyway, there's a couple of units, areas that you put in money, and they'll plant the trees all at one time, but that requires maybe a, you know, bigger sign, like Rochester Hills or something like that, so that probably wouldn't work here. Now, we did talk about trying to do a proposed temporary construction asset through default street. That would, that would be something that probably Ed would have to, you know, we gotta watch out for manholes there at the meters. And I don't even know if it's really feasible, I've walked it a couple times, and I think we could do it.
And I know your plan doesn't have where the water treatment plan is, and then we have to be real careful as to the well site, that, that would have to be approved by council.
The, the well site is, what's the distance, though? That was, that, that would state, it's over 200 feet.
Yeah, if you show the well to the east, or the western boundary of these sub, but there's, it's not a boundary, or a dimension to the southern boundary.
I thought it was on the first plan. I thought somebody wrote a plan, wrote it down. No, not on the first plan either.
No, this is the first one.
It just shows it.
200, 234 feet.
Yeah, that's, that's to the western boundary, not the southern.
Oh, oh, you're talking about here.
Where this is the part where you're talking about, right?
Yeah, I don't know, I was good, we just had to get it for the subject. So that's pretty much, that's pretty much the story there. So I think there wasn't too many things to address, but...
So you haven't talked directly to the planner or the engineer, have you?
I haven't talked directly to either one of them.
Okay. So were you any questions, anybody? So you do know that, under the ordinance, this, we've got to make some, something to make this work, because under our current ordinance, this doesn't work.
I know.
So, I don't, I was kind of looking under subdivision ordinance, or the, a site condo thing, or a planned development, so that, one of the conversations I had with Brian Keacey, our planner, was a planned unit development, something, a planned development. So somehow, we have to work something out, that, because this is in the R1A, which is, none of the sites fit that.
The lots, it's our own.
Yes.
There is a, there is another thing that the state put on some years back, and I think I put a, just an overview of it, and that's contract zoning.
Okay, yeah, you did mention, yeah.
And what contract zoning is, addresses stuff like this, you don't even need to get the, look, the property rezoned or anything, what you need to do is, we come in, in other words, we come in here and we sit down and say, this is what we're gonna do. And I don't know all the rules, I didn't read it, you know, the bay or anything, but basically, it's a contract, like any contract, and there's time limits, in other words, and if you make changes, I don't know what kind of changes I could think of necessarily, but if you make changes, you have to go back to the city, because it's a contract, and it has to be mutually agreed upon, so, it's just, it's contract zoning, and that would, that would really solve this problem right now. But I had never used it, so I don't know what it entails.
Can I make something when we met the lab that last time, or one of those times?
Have to be talked about it, I think.
A little bit.
We talked about, yeah.
So that would be, in this particular case, that would probably be the way to go, because everybody sits down, and we say, okay, this is the deal we made, this is like any deal. And that's how all these things would be addressed.
Okay, so, that's kind of our first thing, the DEQ came back with the firm capacities for the sewer and water, we're, we're okay. I read the one on the water, I haven't seen the one on the sewer, but I heard that was okay, too.
I think it might have that, but it was, everything was okay in the sewer as well.
So, but there, so the, the big thing is to have the unit come up with some kind of a game plan where we can actually do the, do the project. The project is a, we'd like to do the project, but we can't do it in this form, in, in your form and our form, so we've got to blend the two forms together. So after that's done, so I'll contact our planner again, and then kind of talk to him, because him and I had talked about this before, but now that we're getting closer, and this meeting was, again, just kind of refresh everybody's thing, and kind of get everybody everything plain. So after that, would you be opposed to talking direct to the planner?
Oh, no, I mean, I'd be happy to, in fact, usually that's a good idea.
Yeah, I, I think so, we've done that in the past, so.
Yeah.
But just aware that anytime you talk to the planner, it's gonna go, you know, the...
The planner bills me?
He doesn't bill you, he bills us, and then we bill you.
My goodness.
That's how they work.
Why am I surprised? Okay.
No, I, I guess it may actually simplify the process.
Absolutely, and I don't have no problem with that, even a little bit, because you'll get this thing rolling, because time's a waste, you know, economy's good now.
Right.
Okay, so...
Well, that's kind of why I wanted to do this meeting.
Okay.
So I knew we weren't really ready to do any nuts and bolts or anything, but I kind of wanted to, you know, refresh everybody's memory and get, you know, kind of start the snowball.
Well, if everybody's on, basically, if, what we've proposed this evening, like the 24 foot streets, and, and, and the water would probably be the biggest single thing, and the streets, obviously, and bike path, or it wouldn't be a bike path, it'd be some, and I might be able to put an easement, there's a couple foot easement, because it's only those people in the sub, there's only 31 of them, and like I say, a third of those are, five or six, seven of them have access to the park, anyway. Or, actually, they back up to the water main easement, you know, so I mean, it's really, they could go through the park, and that would be all, you know, get into, get into the bike path is not gonna be a problem for the people that live there. I mean, the worst thing that could happen, you'd have to go up to the park and go down the back end of those lots.
What, what are you calling the park?
That, where, where you first come in, that part, that little area, that's where you probably, what you, what I, my thought process was, the, the storm is really on the other side of the water main, you know, if you all looked at the plan, and that usually takes a 10 foot easement or something like that, that 10 foot easement could be a half.
But that's a 10 foot easement that the village would have to grant you.
Grant us, right.
Yeah, so that's another stumbling block.
Yeah, another one?
Well, I mean, it's...
It, it, that, that would be, if it, if I can work around that, it's just that it's easier to do that, and I probably just, I got to...
Just another hurdle.
Just, you know, right, this is where the contract zoning comes in.
Yeah.
And it's lucky we have you guys on the property, you know what I mean, so, it's something that, this is, this is a team play here, you know, in other words, there's some things that will make this project easier, one would be to put the, the biggest thing that thing is usually used for, you know, the back drainage, you can say, well, it drains the property and all that, well, that, if you got grass and that, and so on and so forth, that's not really a big problem, is, that's where I usually tap my, put my water taps in, you know, like some croc leads, they go into those, so what I'd do is I'd probably bring those up, anyway, just put them between two houses or something like that, I mean, I wouldn't have to go back out there, but it's just something that increases the, the look of the backyard, too, I mean, that'd all be mowed and probably taken care of, you know, I guess what is an easement, and I would maintain that easement.
So it's a 15 foot for the water main size? So you want to try to come from the park, down that easement, all the way to the trail?
Pardon?
So what you wanted to do was to use that easement between the two, and come from the park, go straight down south to the trail?
Just go straight down, just go straight?
It says it's a, it's, according to your drawing, it says a 15, existing 15 foot easement for water main. Which I was figuring out, I was expecting 12.
Well, I would, if the, if the, if those manholes, if the storm goes behind it, that would be another 10 or 15, I don't know what that easement is, but that's where that would go, and probably the logical spot would be to put it down there. And then that way there is all maintained by the association.
Yeah.
Water main easement.
Split it.
Storm easement, the whole thing.
I had to do that for my neighbor, I took, for Steve, for Waskins, I had a split, we did the split, because it was all on his, so I took nine feet of it so they can build their house.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, if he knows his, is on our, is on my property.
On my property.
Yeah, so... Got some good notes there. No sidewalks?
All right, there's a sidewalk around there.
Is that, is that what's in front of the court, or are you gonna have like the other, yeah, you're, it's running right on the end of the street?
Yeah, that's right, this, this...
Okay, so there's no, there's nothing else on the right of way?
Right.
No greens, maybe?
Sidewalk, if you just write that one over there, this goes right to the curb.
The sidewalk does?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a little band around, I thought that's when I was looking at it, too, from Franklin, you see where the, and I didn't...
I thought there was grass.
No, that sidewalk, but it's right to the curb.
I didn't remember Franklin's sidewalk going over the property.
Because that, very, yeah, usually that's how you see it, only because if you have like a two foot strip or something, it's kind of what's maintained.
Right, right.
It dries up, you can't spread it, you can't do anything with it.
Right.
What, what sometimes happens, people, when they, when they do park, they'll park up and sneak up on the sidewalk a little bit, there was a guy over there, and the one in Romeo, boy, he'd be out there like, flies on you or what, and he'd knock on a door and tell them to get that thing off the sidewalk.
Oh.
Well, he was an old cement man.
Yeah.
So, he, uh...
He didn't like that.
He didn't like that, but anyway, that was nearly over there.
And we did say the turnaround, the cul-de-sac, because then you got to figure out you got a garbage truck around there, right? And then the fire truck turnaround?
It's, it's...
So what is, what is that?
The thing.
What is your dimension? Do you know what that is on the cul-de-sac?
Uh, this says as to, I don't know, I know it, it says that McComb County, I guess they have cul-de-sac requirements, so that's what you, I think it states on there.
Okay, yeah, at the bottom.
Yeah. So whatever the county requires, that's what it is.
Probably the road standards.
Yeah, that's what the spec is. Like I said, the whole thing... Like I said, the whole thing is pretty low, the county specs.
So what, we're gonna have to show this to the fire department? So I'd like that, you know, in the future drawing, not just to say it to this spec, but have it what is stated. So then when the fire guys look at it, they can say, okay, don't have to look anything up.
Yeah, so I say, you say, put the two radiuses in and put that diameter of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Radius of the two eyebrows.
You know, one nice thing is, well, I think I almost parked anywhere there and get, get a hose to the house.
I thought I did see fire on here.
See, you got 40 long assistance, you'd have, it'd probably be 200 feet. Yeah, but anyway, I think I've got a lead somewhere.
Real bad, it's right in the front, okay.
So what's your, what's your timeframe? So I think to come up with the thing for the, to get the zoning right, might take a meeting or two, what, what do you, what, what's your plans?
My plans is start, if you guys say you can start today, I'd start tomorrow. I mean, I can't, well, I can't get anybody that quick, but I gotta let out for bids. I mean, I gotta, I gotta get the engineering drawing, so, okay. So the seafronts of events is, number one, we have to, we have to come up with what we're gonna do here. Are we going to put the, the storm, you know, on the other side? You know, the things that are different from what we have to do, what are we gonna do about those, okay? To make sure the project's a pliable project, because the cost is, you know, once I lift pump, lift pump had to be done, that kind of soured my prospect on the thing a little bit, because that's somewhere between $150,000 and $180,000. And that's sort of, and I don't have only 31 units to spread that over, so that comes out to $5,000 a unit right then and there. And there really isn't a whole lot left, in fact, there isn't anything left. That's all, maybe the village would even work with us a little bit on a tap fees.
Okay, so from, so this stuff is beyond the planning commission. So the easement, so what are your, what are the things that you, that you just mentioned?
Well, they're all in that, that thing, that, that response letter.
Well, I understand that, but, so, again, I'm gonna have to go to council and get, then we're gonna have to get with council to approve these certain things, so...
Right.
If you could kind of help me out on just what I'm going to council for.
Okay, well, basically, the water main, we don't want to extend that, is that what you're talking about?
Well, that's, that's gonna be engineering, so, but I'm, so the easement is gonna strictly be council.
Yep.
So any kind of, anything like that, so you want a 10-foot easement or a 15-foot easement into the, well, eight site, right?
Right, okay, so they got that. Uh, there's any other easements?
Is that easement to get access to the trail?
An access to the trail.
And, okay, so that, and that's okay, trail.
And the other one would be a temporary...
Temporary construction access through Depot.
Through Depot Street.
I don't even know if that's...
It might not even be pliable.
I don't, I don't need though, because I don't know if you can get by, this is an old map.
Well, it's...
Here. Keep going, yeah, to the arsenic treatment plant, that's right behind there.
With the building here, I don't know if you can, if you're gonna be able to go in through there. I'd just physically have to take a look to see.
It looks like it's close, probably, look at, on sheet, on the cover page.
Well, it depends on where the, where the arsenic treatment plant is.
Yeah.
Because the Depot Street, it's, the arsenic treatment plant, if Depot Street was extended, would be, it'd be right in it.
Yeah, and I would say, he's got, there's, on the cover page, there's just, I mean, there's something, there's something possibly.
And I don't know if there's enough room between the buildings and treaty about you to get through there.
That's, I know that some of those manholes are shown on your plan, you did spot those, you know, the catch basins and stuff like that.
Uh-huh.
That's shown on the plan. You know, this, in fact, this would look like maybe, I'm not sure. But anyway, that's where those are, so I'd have to probably either whip around here, you know, and that would be something you just...
Because your property goes right to the trail, correct?
Yeah, it goes right to the trail.
Hmm, no, no.
Well, there's a, yeah, there's a right of way in there.
Well, the, the, the home trail starts, this is, easement, for that, that's 100 feet easement.
I thought you were right here. Oh, no, that's well eight.
No.
So you're over here.
Yes.
Okay, that's, okay.
Yeah.
So then you've got to go all the way through this.
Yeah.
So we'd have to, kind of get a current map to look at that.
Yeah, we'd have to, but that's, if that doesn't happen, it's just something that would be easier to do, but it's not a, you know, it's not a big thing.
It's not a trust.
If we can make it work, we can make, we can maybe do, figure on that, it's just, we can work on that later. So it's not, is this a thought?
Okay. So the big thing, so what if you don't get this 15-foot easement in the well site?
If I don't get the 15-foot easement, I can, I can work, I can work that out. I mean, it's not the end of the world.
But it's funny, as you called it, a bike path through one of the 10 lots at the south end.
Well, pardon?
You would be, you, you called it a bike path, per se. It's, it's between lots six through 15 are the only ones that have access to the trail.
Yeah.
So you'd have to find a path between one of these two par, one of these parcels.
Yeah, and it's, uh...
That may even be one of your bigger ones.
Of course, you can't see the park.
Between 14 to 15 may be the most suitable, or six or seven, but...
Well, the ones that make the most sense would be like 10 to 12.
It would, you could do a little tiny, I mean, it would just be...
Really tiny in there.
It'd be tiny, you know, a five-foot, like a five-foot walk or something like that, or... In fact, one thing you might want to do is not even make it out of concrete or asphalt, do, uh, I don't know what you'd do, I'd, I'd call it the landscape guide, or some sort of...
Mulch or something?
Mulch or something, you know, it just has to be a, someplace to get through.
Yeah, then, yeah.
I could take a coastal with that, because I'd rather... Yeah, if it could be a landscape thing that doesn't, I don't want something that, you know, that the people that live there is gonna be all bent out of shape about. I mean, you know, someone's gonna live next to those, that little bike path.
Right.
So that's the big thing. If it's just a, some sort of a landscape type of thing that, you know, it's like, acts, launches on lakes, you know, sometimes they're never used, but they're still there.
Right. So this, excuse my ignorance, but this drawing that you're submitted today, how many of the points does it address from the engineer and the plan?
Almost everything.
Okay, all right.
Does it water?
And when I say addresses, addresses, like, it doesn't address the bike path necessarily. I mean, it's not shown on the plan, but the, the water thing is calculated, we went through that, it was calculated wrong, it's only 24 yards, so you gotta turn over water two points a lot of times a day. But that's just a, I don't know how we came up with that.
Well, I know the village is, through the years, any deadline that they tried to loop, so even if the usage was there, they tried to loop the lines. Okay, so I'm pretty sure Becky forwarded this stuff today, if not, she was gonna do it tomorrow morning. So then, they should have it before the end of the week. Give them a little bit of time, give us a little bit of time to talk to council, and then maybe in about two weeks, we'll have a conversation and find out just kind of where we're at.
Yeah.
Plan the next step.
That would work out well. And I, the biggest thing when you give it to the planner, point out the calculations on the water.
Okay.
That might make a little difference if the fellow...
So I think that would be more the engineer.
Yeah, and I've talked, and I've talked to Row Engineering as well. I've worked with them, they were the engineers up in Oakdale for a project that we did years ago.
I think we use Row too, don't we?
Yeah.
The village uses Row, yeah, yeah, that's...
Yeah, so I, who's, who's your, who, who's, who from Row do you work with?
Um, Skyler.
Skyler, that's right.
Yeah.
I worked with him up in Oakdale, oh, this would be a long time ago, but... So I can even talk to him, that's not a problem.
Well, any other question?
Street lighting?
I think we're kind of a ways away from, I think we're just playing that, the big stuff at this point.
Since you mentioned it, what we did over there, McVicker Metals, there was a light on east side controlled by dawn and dusk type of thing, and I had to lit that up, if you go over there in the evening, you'll find that's real, there's no big glaring street lights or anything like that, like I got in front of my house in Romeo.
Yeah, there's all kinds of things that you can do.
Yeah, that, that's what we did over there, and that, that works out real fine, if you go over there in the evening, you'll see.
Where are you gonna locate post office boxes on?
Uh, there's a spot showing on the plan, when you first come in, there's a pad, and then there's one of those...
CBUs.
In northwest corner.
CBUs, I recall, in the middle of the park in New Orleans. It'd probably be two units.
And that's what we did, if you see over in McVicker Metals, we did the same thing there, just...
Right at the entrance.
Just right at the entrance, a bump in the road, and that works out real well.
Like how many are, how many are the box?
16, 16.
16, and so you had two pull, and what, how many do we have?
I think we have five.
Five?
Yeah, I think there's five, five or six, of retired postal, that's how I used to work on those units.
Yeah, that, and the one over there, I'd probably make it nice, you know, like I did in, in McVicker Metals, you know, where they, there's a little spot, you can put notices and stuff, and I'd probably use the same, I thought I might use the same plans if I can find it, because that seems to work out real well, because they're all loaded from the back.
Right, they're gonna load it from the back.
They're loaded from the back, so it, it, it'll work, that, that, and try and get something that looks pretty, pretty nice.
Some of the care, like on ours, they use the front to load, because they're supposed to use the back.
Yeah, the, the back, I, I guess you go over from the front, but...
Yeah, I know, it's the care is, on ours, do load from the front.
Yeah.
But they're supposed to load from the back, that's...
There was some place...
Convenience.
That the post office, I can do that here, right? I can put mailboxes on the site, but I know some, you know, somewhere where the post office didn't do that.
I think you have to check with them before you put them in, I don't think.
Or you don't, yeah, you gotta tell them what you're gonna do, and all that, and I got, got the eight inches thick concrete.
Right, yeah, they inspect, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they inspected, yeah, done with a few of those.
Yeah. They do have different sized boxes too, there's eight 12s and 16s, I think, actually. They're smaller boxes.
I haven't, that's a post office thing, and I give them that. Street lights, like you say, that, that works real well in the Vicar Metal set. That works real well. Lights, really lights it up without having this big glaring thing.
Right.
Talked about our turning radiuses for the fire trucks, the garbage trucks. Landscaping plan, easement for the park access, water capacity, road width. You mentioned too about, you know, like, yeah, how to get the lot sizes.
So I think where we're at now is just kind of get preliminary approvals from council to go along with the project and to see what they're gonna say about an easement, see what the engineer is gonna say about the, the things that have come back in the planner, and then kind of come up with how we're gonna, how we're going to incorporate this into our master plan or zoning ordinance. So once we do that, that's kind of the preliminary hurdles, and then we'll start actually working on the individual building blocks.
Yeah.
So after Brother sells this norm, are you ready to get dirty again?
Not really. Those want me to be honest. I'm pretty happy with this.
Well, that, that can lift, you know, it's just bank on time, tap into that sewer, and that lift station kind of...
Okay, so that's, so I've heard about the lift station, and so what are you, what are you looking for from the village as far as that goes?
Well, any kind of help they would help with, I mean, I, I was hoping to be able to tap into what's there now, you know, it was, everything was sized for that.
Well, I know you've had conversations with Ed about that.
Yeah.
What does he say? What does he say?
Well, Ed, no, Ed's, Ed doesn't have, in fact, Ed doesn't have any problem with, I mean, I went over to where, you can talk to him as well, you know, where they have, where the lift station is now in relation to where the lift station is in phase one, or, well, that's, or, well, the lift station went really, I think, in phase two, although we put it in obviously.
You know, one of those, they're, they're, you're totally redoing, right, Mike? Which lift station are you working on?
The pump seven, right now you're talking about.
That's a well seven.
Yeah, the well seven.
Didn't you guys just do a lift station update?
Not that I'm working, but I was, I missed the last couple months, so I don't know.
Was that something they were just working on? Maybe it was last, maybe it was last year.
When did they do that?
Yeah.
There was some time, because we, we had, we had the flooding challenges too.
Yeah, I think it was thought of maybe redoing the...
And that was, that was in phase two, I think the, the lift station, because that, that's a big lift station, isn't it?
Yeah, well, yeah, it was designed for 100 and some odd, you know, 180 houses or 190 houses or some dang, and they're big enough to do everything.
Well, I'd say it's almost smack, it's, God, it's like right here.
But I, for whatever reason, I don't know why, it's never been talked about fixing up that lift station, or making it larger, or whatever the case, or maybe it's not room for it, I, I can't.
I don't think they have the room for it, you're on its right of way.
Right in some of the front yard, there's maybe...
Yeah, for whatever reason, it didn't seem like it was something, I can't remember why, but it doesn't seem like it was...
Usually a lift station like that is, got its own piece of, it's on its own parcel.
Yeah.
It's not in the right of way.
Yeah, that, but anyway, that was put in long lines in the seventies.
Kristy? Mike? I don't know, anybody say, Chris?
Got my big ones, all right.
Okay.
Everybody on board?
Yeah, so far.
Okay, let's make it happen. But let's make it happen as quick as we can.
That's, that was this meeting, so, because there really wasn't anything to do concretely at this meeting, so just kind of reaffirm what was going on and kind of get a direction and move forward and kind of keep the ball rolling.
Well, just remind the city council that I did give them 15 feet. You know, I thought, okay. And I saved the big tree too, I had, after they had the original easement, they wanted diagonal across there to save that oak tree. In fact, I was gonna call the project Big Oak Something, you know, because of that big tree, but everybody knows the trail, because they don't know where the big oak tree is.
What are you gonna call it?
Big, uh...
Orchard Trail Metals?
Orchard Trail Metals. What's, like I said, I was gonna incorporate that big oak tree in there, Big Oak Metals or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
But when I cast it onto the guy that was doing my drawings and stuff, he says, why don't you use the trail? Everybody knows where that is.
Yeah, right.
They don't know where the big oak tree is.
That's true.
Well, if I, if it was my luck, if I named it for the oak tree, the oak tree died at that.
No, no, you know what, I get one of those chainsaw guys and make the biggest, whatever it is out of it.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay. So, thank you, thank you, you got the drawing?
Yep, and we'll, we'll be here for a while.
Yep, so give, give us a couple of weeks, and, so council meet Monday. And give the planner and the engineer a couple of weeks.
Okay.
We'll be engaged.
Thanks, guys.
Okay.
Public comment?
Yeah, thanks. Okay, so any public comment, how'd we do tonight?
All right.
Good, okay, glad to hear it. Okay, chair report, I had none. So...
Adjournment?
Adjournment.
Motion to adjourn at 8:29, that's, yeah, 8:28.
Okay, second?
Second.
Mike? Okay. Okay, all on paper?
Aye.
Aye, still moved?
Aye.
Okay.